Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Maclay City Council meeting of May 25. Please remember to silence your phones. And if you have any inclination to speak at the public period, if you please call out a speaker card with your hand and just hand it to our board. Of course, let's, as we traditionally do, let's have a vote of silence and all of us pledge allegiance. Please join me in a vote of silence. Thank you. Now, if you're willing, please join me in pledging allegiance.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, two liberal liberties with which is hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a couple of presentations, proclamations. First will be attended to by Vice Mayor Guthrie.
I am Welsh. How are you today?
Good. Chris, good to see you. How's it going?
Good. I asked you this.
All right.
Whereas public works professionals focus on construction facilities, emergencies, management, and service that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Maclay. And whereas each public work service could not be provided without the dedicated efforts to the public works professionals, engineers, managers, supervisors, and employees of the city of Maclay. Whereas it is the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children of the city of Maclay to gain knowledge and maintain ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works, first response in public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the Americans Public Works Association. And whereas the American Public Works Association has elected People Purpose Presence as its theme for the Year 2025 National Public Works Week. Now, therefore, I, Vance Guthrie, by virtue of authority vested as the Vice Mayor of the City of Maclay, Florida, in recognition of that event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18 through May 24, 2025, as National Public Works Week.
It's all yours if you want to say something.
Just on behalf of the public work staff, we want to thank council for everything you guys do for us and all the support you provide us. And hope to see everyone at Touch Truck this Sunday, and you guys are invited to our rodeo next Tuesday.
Thank you, Chris. And we have a little more proclamation, and it'll be attended to by new council members, Scott French.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas this emergency, the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of the Maclay Fire Rescue Department engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, I, Scott French, council member, seat three, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the mayor of the City of Maclay, Florida, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18 through May 24, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week. With the EMS theme, EMS Week, We Care for Everyone, in the City of Maclay, Florida, and encourage all citizens to publicly recognize and express appreciation to all members of the Maclay Fire Rescue Department for their care and dedication to the citizens of Maclay. And in witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Maclay to be affixed, this 12th day of May, 2025, on Mayor Lawrence.
You did a great job.
Mr. Mayor, council, in council, the recognition goes to the brave men and women of this department. They strive every day to provide extraordinary care to the citizens and residents and visitors of the city, and we just appreciate the support you give us every day. So, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, people. Thank you all for showing up this evening. These are essential core services of the city, and we are proud of you and thank you for every, all of your efforts out there. So, we all appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Okay. Y'all want to say for the rest of me?
It's a short one.
Okay. Let's see. We have a little bit as far as any other business to attend to?
No, sir.
Okay, we have a consent agenda. Does any house member wish to pull any of the consent agenda items? No? Does anybody in the public have any comments on consent agenda items two and three? Seeing that it's close to public period, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agendas presented.
A motion.
I'll second.
In a second. Laurie, would you please follow along?
Councilmember Guthrie.
Aye.
Councilmember French?
Aye.
Councilmember Randolph?
Aye.
Mayor Lawrence.
Aye. Okay, we got the consent agenda. Now, we're on to the public period. And I see there are at least two people who are not being paid to be here tonight, so perhaps anybody? Doris, would you, Ms. Howe, would you like to say something before they come in?
I'd just go here.
You just went back.
You don't need to worry. You talk to someone.
You've got three minutes. You can spend however you like.
I just wanted to say for the emergency medical team, those folks still are on the top. I had to call in from the house a couple of times in recent years, and they just fed us with attendance. At one point, my mom said, "You need to take them cookies."
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Howe.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else on the period for once or twice, close to public period, and on to your decisions? And we have before us tonight the auditor selection committee's election. And let's see, Laurie, Mark, would you like to?
Oh, sure. Just real, just real briefly, as we discussed at the last meeting, the City Council directed staff to prepare a resolution to start off the auditor selection process. Laurie has prepared that to attach to this agenda. And the process is pretty straightforward. There has to be one member of the City Council that will chair the auditor selection committee, and at least two members of the public. Based upon that, we put a application up on the webpage to solicit anyone from the public that would want to serve on the committee. We had two members of the public that said they would like to serve on the auditor selection committee, Ms. Doris Howe, and Teresa Garrett, who used to serve on the CRA board. So, they put their names in, not limited to those two. It's a sort of wide open when it comes to auditor selection committee. You can add people on if you spoke to anyone that would like to serve. I like to keep it at a manageable level, though. Fifteen, twenty members might be a bit much. But pleasure in the City Council. As far as staff goes on this, staff access support to the committee. As we talked about strategic planning, we took a quick look at the org chart. The auditors are one of those positions that report directly to the City Council. So, City Clerk Cliff and the auditor report directly to you, so we just provide support to the committee. They answer their questions, explain the process. They will ultimately review any of the proposals that come in, rank them, and send that ranking to the City Council for a final decision. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
No, but I did, Mark and I had talked, and you have to have a minimum of two, so I did get ahold of a past councilperson, Wurzel, and she has, she's going to be on board also.
So, she's going to do it?
Yeah. So, it's going to be, I mean, really, there's a lot of talent. I just talked to Doris, who we've been on many committees together, and she has a background in this, so that's fantastic news. I just found out, so.
So, perhaps the best course of action would be to appoint the chair first, and then the members.
Okay. That's a good, good course. So, let's start with the council members. And so, somebody from the City Council will be on this committee, and they will also be the chair. Do we have any nominations for that position?
Well, I think last time I said I would, would that, yeah, I don't want to do it. I have free time.
Okay. Does anybody else?
I nominate Vance.
There you go. You got a first.
I second.
I second.
I, third nomination.
All right.
Does, would anybody else on council like to serve on this? Anybody else would like to do that? I don't want to foreclose that opportunity.
Does that have to be, it has to be announced and posted and everything since two councilmen?
Well, now that I've said that.
It would have to be.
Yes.
Yes.
Otherwise, it just functions as a more.
Committee. Right. It becomes such a high issue, I guess, at that point. So, yes, it's complicated, but it's not a very complicated one.
From that standpoint, though, that selection process is going to be open to the public anyway?
It's a sunshine committee by definition, yes.
So, you don't need to get that issue.
Yeah, no, no. It's just a matter of, you know, making sure this, I mean, it'll have to go.
Minutes kept.
Minutes kept. Yes. So, I, if anybody else, I think, would like to serve on the council, I guess.
I spoke with Mark about it today. I've got something coming up in the end of June through the first part of July. As long as those meetings don't interfere with that, I serve on the committee.
Okay. Can we take that as a self-nomination?
Sure.
Okay. All right.
Well, second is self-nomination.
And I'll third. Okay.
I'm used to more like standing there and everybody else steps back.
That's right. Okay, good. So, we'll have some good eyes on this, and let's, let's turn now to the residents who put in their application. Does anybody have any nominations for this group?
Oh, yes. I would like to dominate Doris, sorry, I was going to call you Doris, Howe?
Howe.
Howe.
Okay. If we have a little bit of background on her, I mean, I've said she has a background in this area. Okay.
You want me to come up?
I know that it was grief in the package.
Right. Well, yes. Ms. Howe, would you mind?
She came all this way.
Right.
Put her to work now.
Before I retired, I worked with the Commisses, and part of my role was managing community development districts. And in that role, we were from different districts, which were quasi-needles of government. We had to do auditor RFPs and analyze the process, and so it was published, and then, probably for the course of the CBD, it was a consideration and processing. And then, when the audits were done, there's young fellows and process that was done. So, that's, that's the background on it, on the CBD, and from an administrative, from a process. That's a scoop in a nutshell.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Howe. Okay.
No, I think that's good. She's going to have more information, knowledge than myself.
Yeah, okay.
Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, that's great. Thanks.
Thank you, Doris.
Yes, sir.
I'll second that nomination.
Okay. You're out the third it. Okay. Do we have any other nominations? What else? Teresa Garrett, who is on our CRA?
Yeah, I'd love to make that motion.
Go ahead. Teresa Garrett, the nominee, I'll second that. I'll third it. Okay.
I would do some, I feel so, actually, always comes here here and, this is here thirty seconds.
Right. You know, they're CRA for a year or more.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor, a question, if, you know, I mentioned I'd reach out to Laurie Wurzel to be part of this. Do we have to vote for her also?
Okay.
Then I'd like to make the motion to add Laurie Wurzel onto this committee.
Okay.
I'll second.
Go ahead.
I'll second.
Okay. I'll third it. There we go.
You're not to show up at a meeting.
And this, this is discussed with Mark earlier. This is not going to be like a type of committee where I have to worry about the eye breakers or anything like that, so having on members, even members kind of irrelevant. To the council, what the rankings. So, that makes our committee Doris Howe, thank you. Teresa Garrett, thank you. Bill Randolph, and Vance Guthrie, and Lauren Hurst. So, we have a five-member council, or committee, rather. I think that's really all for that. That's it. That's our decision for the evening. So, anything else, Mark, on that? Do you all? Nope. Okay, good. Mr. City Attorney, any?
I think it's probably good to give you a CRA update, given that we have now completed the legislative session, and we were able to not be put out of our misery and forced to close our CRA. The misery, of course, is a joke, because that's apparently what the legislature generally thinks we do. It's great misery. But what happened is, at the end of the session, as I've mentioned previously, the Senate and the House were doing like this. The Senate supports CRAs, generally speaking. They would have gone for restricting the way we spend money a little more on the things that we already know we're not supposed to spend money on. They would have made it more explicit. But other than that, they didn't want to get rid of them. On the House side, they really didn't want to get rid of them. In fact, they wanted to do it so bad that they struck through their entire bill and then add that language back into the Senate priority, particularly the Senate President's Priority Bill, thinking his 501-bench bill, he would want it through as a priority and would go ahead and support their stuff. He didn't. That's how strongly he felt about not killing us. So, thank you for that. And they will, there will be a special session, because not only didn't I agree on this, they're like four billion apart, just a few billion on the budget. So, there will be a special session on the budget coming up, and we'll see if they're able to bridge that gap. Don't know how they're going to do it. I don't know where we're going to end up either on property taxes. Obviously, you all have heard that the governor's idea is to get rid of property taxes. I think that's not particularly wise in kind. Particularly since the option to replace it is with more sales tax, doesn't make a lot of sense either, but that's what we'll see. The good news is, they're going to be so focused on that, they will not be able to deal with us until next year. But be assured that this will come back up again, because it was definitely a priority on the House side of the deal, and when elections come along, you never know what's going to change. So, it would be, who of us, if you look at the worst-case scenario of this possible, this past year, it was that as of October 1, we would have not been able to fund any new projects that weren't already in the budget, and we would essentially be done. So, in the next six to eight months, if we can come up with some real priority projects that we want to get done with money we have, and that we think that will come in to start the funding process, we probably would be better off doing that than waiting, because it will come back. I just don't know what the outcome will be.
So, as we launch into the summer season of budget, I guess that's a good time to think that over and figure out if we can prioritize any of that.
Well, I see a lot of this on, on the internet and all the little apps and everything, is the governor talking about it, then there's people going, "Good lad," you know, and trying to sell that as, "Well, you buy a TV, you don't pay, you know, keep paying tax on that TV, you own it." And I'm like, "Well, what do you do with a car and a boat and all these other things?" Right? So, yeah.
Well, again, simply, what will be the alternative, since all the local government's under my private tax? If you take that away, you got to come up with an alternative.
He won't do tax. He already said that. Don't try and create any taxes.
Then I guess we're all just going to go home and spend, have a lot of money night free.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Bl? Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, one clarification on the auditor selection committees, since we have two members of council serving on it, we need to make a decision on who will be chair in the house.
Yes. Is that up to us, or would that be up to the committee?
You could leave it up to the committee, or you could make a determination here. Just wanted to point that out.
My thought is that Vance was first on. He's the chair.
Right. That's a nomination for Vance. Do you want to second that? I second that.
I'll third it.
It's very good.
You guys, appreciate it.
All right. Good to have all kinds of actually. Thanks this evening. Okay, Mark, anything from?
No, just what Chris touched on with the Touch Truck this Sunday, in conjunction with Farmer's Market, and the rodeo next week. You're all invited on that. We've got an email. Going to find you at the schedule, so check your inboxes.
Okay.
Calendar's not going to be long.
And then the rodeo next week? And then the rodeo next week? All right. Any reports? Okay, any council member?
I, yeah, I got a few things. So, on the Touch Truck, I did talk to the Lakes Department head, and she informed me that they're doing a whole bunch of items to promote clean lakes and everything out there, clean water. So, it's going to be an interesting time, event. So, yeah, please go out there in the rodeo. Bill, Scott, if you've never been to this thing, it's fun to go out there and really, you know, try out all the equipment and do it, and really see, you know, how difficult it really is to drive some of these vehicles. So, come on out, man, it's a good time, you know. I did, on the CRA, I did reach out to Representative Broder, Representative Smith, and Representative V. Escimani, and thanked them, because they, none of the three supported that, you know, to do away with it. So, yeah.
Okay, good. Okay, somebody else? All right. We can stand adjourned.
Fantastic first meeting. We need more of those.